Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. I hereby call this meeting to order, the City Council meeting. Uh, May second, two thousand twenty-three, seven P M. To order will stand and will do the pledge allegiance to. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone for coming tonight. Uh, thank you for the young people coming. Because you are young people, so you're old, but you're young. Welcome. Thank you for coming and remember, and especially, thank you for your comments that remember. Uh, this is from me. You are appreciated. Your comments are appreciated, and I I appreciate everybody sharing it. I will do the roll call. And as we look across here, we have everyone here. So all all members of our council are in attendance. We'll move on to our approval of minutes, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, our regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, to approve the city council regular minutes for the meeting of April eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
I'll say it.
All right, I have motion to approve the minutes at a second. Is there any discussion anyone would like to have? Having hearing them, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Financial report. This this is for us, month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, we're three quarters of the year to our budget on on this report. And um, I want to point out so that uh. You don't forget, in our general fund, if you look over our expenditure portion, that we spent one point four million. I just want to remind you, one point two million of that was the payment we sent to Pers to establish society, something unfunded actually liability. Uh, so that's that big expense there. Um, the other uh, big money coming up for general fund is uh, we had our payment received for the sale of the lots on Front Streets. When they're excited that that has been completed. Our wastewater and water projects for the Geo Bond are coming along nicely, uh, faith. Just awarded as you saw the city manager pro times letter. Um, so we're excited to get that one going and start to close out phase one on these. Um, we're nearing completion on them. Um, not real big changes on the interest rates. They actually kind of held a little bit steady compared to last months. Um, and that's all I have to report for you unless you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, partner.
We'll move on to our public comment. Uh, anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter of litigation. It was a judicial land use matter or a matter scheduled for public hearing in some future date. So at this time, I'd like to invite Lisa and Cadence Ferguson. To like step up on the mic over there.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak this all. Can she join us?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Want me to go first? Yeah, okay. And so I've never done this before, bear with me. Um, but we just wanted to open the conversation about having chickens inside city limits. Trying to present some pros and cons. Um. One of the reasons that I was kind of fond of this idea was just the new challenges that we faced the past like three years. I have five kids, so the family of seven only went to Walmart to do our grocery shopping, and they said, hmm, one dozen eggs, we're limiting it. So people don't order. I'm like, no, five dozen eggs is what we usually, you know, in like two weeks. So we have some new challenges there, the egg shortages. Um, my main goal was to feed my family. Uh, we kind of talked to a lot of people in city limits, kind of got a feel for what people were. Like thinking about with uh, having chickens in city limits and obviously being in city limits, we would need some boundaries, some uh, rules. It wouldn't be the same as if you lived outside of city limits, but um. I wrote down some benefits. We damn have some benefits too. Um, but benefits, having chickens, uh, eggs to feed your family, chickens make great pets, chickens reduce waste by eating cattle scraps. Their omnivores leave just about anything. That was kind of interesting. Belgium did a study where they gave out uh. Three laying hens to each family and they had two thousand families volunteer to take laying hens for two years. They didn't give them away. They couldn't kill them. Um, and they reduced their waste by, I think, ten tons a year just from scraps going to chicken. And they provided enough eggs for like the whole community. So it's pretty interesting. Um. Chicken people, they can be entertaining. They offer the opportunity for young people to learn responsibility. They offer a social aspect as far as sharing eggs with your neighbors and asking for advice. Um, many of our men have probably had people knock on the door, drop produce and run. Now we have chickens that are not chickens, but eggs. So, um. They can reduce their fashion and affect that many pets can. Uh, chickens have gone after mice and fish from time to time, eliminating more pets. They're small, they're low maintenance. Um, two chickens have less less weight than average house cat. Um, chicken waste can also be composted for garden garden use later. Uh, chickens provide an opportunity for children within city limits to participate in another aspect of uh, four H or F F A. Um. Chickens can provide meat and chicken bone broth is extremely good for fighting respiratory viruses. Uh, there is no purchase limit when you can provide eggs for yourself. Chickens would cause families relief. Uh, if there is an egg shortage, chickens would provide some security to large families that were affected by the limited purchase options during the pandemic. They are cute and fluffy. My kids help me with that one, so uh, they can be good for gardening. Chicken is a great way to reconnect with the food supply and learn how food is made. Um, we are a proud agriculture community, so. That kind of all for mine with us too, I think. Uh, chickens can provide many educational activities for kids to learn about life cycles. Um, chicken eggs are better quality when they come from your backyard chickens because they have a variety of diet versus farm fed chicken. That tends to just be freeing. Um, closer like for you here.
Want to add something? Yeah, I have a few points of the eye. Um. As an F A member, we have the option to do poultry for competition. So it'd be very helpful to me and the other F A members if we had chickens on our own properties. Um, we currently have a garden and we're raising food to the food pantry. So having chickens would help us be able to and other residents and boardmen to be able to donate eggs to the food pantry as well. And food prices are going up, are expected to keep going up. So people having their own eggs is very helpful for them and for other people. Uh, we're almost double the number of people coming to the food pantry over the last three months. With that, there are more and more people who need food, so having our own chickens and our own eggs is very helpful. Yeah.
And then just to be fair, just putting down some potential challenges that I've heard people bring up. Uh, noise, too many chickens can be bad for yards, chickens that escape, uh, to bees and smell of waste. Um, that is probably why we need some ordinance or, for example, you're gonna tell that has the backyard poultry permit. So there are rules in place. Roosters are allowed. You can't have rooster if that makes sense. Um, there is a limit to how many chickens you can have in most of these counties and most of these states. That makes sense. You're not overrun. And a lot of these counties are not allowed to sell eggs. That would probably stop people from wanting thirty chickens. Um, as far as them getting out of the yard, it's probably about the same uh. Amount of uh, challenges as if your dog gets out of the yard. Um. As far as smell of waste, again, probably the same as if someone doesn't keep up their dog waste. That would probably be worse in my opinion, but. Um, but I think this is the thing that that the city could probably tackle and find a middle ground with the community, but everyone is.
All right, well, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to have color comment that didn't turn in a comment form? All right, so we'll move on to our resolutions. Resolution seven dash twenty twenty-three, press three, Amazon data service agreement.
With the man? Yes. So uh, before you is a resolution, uh, Columbia River Enterprise Zone three uh, board met on. The seventh of April and uh. Agreed to approve five agreements with uh, A W S moving forward. Um, before you is a resolution to uh, formalize on the city's behalf of those agreements.
Okay, so we're looking, looking for a motion.
I motion to approve resolution seven dash twenty twenty-three, the matter of approving agreements between the sponsors of the Columbia River Enterprise Zone Three and Amazon Data Services.
I second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We just. We don't have to do one for each one?
No, we did all five in one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other business, America's Best Value In, Appeal of Transient Room Tax Penalty and Interest Interest Piece.
So uh, you should have received the letter um, from the manager or owner. Uh, America's Best Value In, and Marta's been dealing with this, so I'll turn it over to her so she can explain some of the issues and where we're at.
Thank you. Um, that Mr. Chavon Patel, he purchased America's Best Value In on September twenty-five, twenty twenty. Um, it is within the city limits. They are um, applicable to transient room tax. And those reports are filed quarterly with the city and they send in that tax, so. It's not costing the business any because they just pass it on to their customers. They collect it and then they send it on to us. Um, since the purchase date, he had not submitted any of his payments or any of his uh, transit room tax forms. Um. Been dealing with him since then. The. The ironic thing is that the day that he purchased it, he called me and wanted to know what he needed to do to get registered, to get this all going. I thought, wow, this will be a great relationship. You know, day one, um, I sent him everything by email as he requested and then nothing and nothing. Um, and so finally, last month, he came in um, in person. And he claimed that he had no idea how. How late and how delinquent his account had gotten. Um, his bookkeeper had kind of just. Not done anything because he was dealing with some family medical issues. Um, and so when Mr. Chavon Patel had come into town. He had just been realized that all these letters had paddled up. Um, one of the contacts that I had made at one point was I physically went down to the hotel, spoke with his manager. And at that time, she told me, he comes in every week and I have in the mail. I know he's getting them. So um. He does have a right, as it is in our ordinance, uh, on transit room tax to request um. An appeal to the city council. He's on wanting waiver of a hundred percent of his penalties and interest. Um, he did. True up his account with just the transient room tax portion. Um, he has not paid any of the interest or penalties, um, and he's wanting those waived. And the total of the delinquencies is six thousand one hundred forty dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, and so the letter he submitted is is a field.
I have a question. How much? How much of this? Total is before he purchased it?
This is all as of purchase date going forward.
So September twenty twenty.
So when he purchased it, he decided he wasn't going to charge room tax or pay?
Oh, he was charging it. He just wasn't paying it to the city.
How much was the total room tax charged for this period?
Um, I don't have that total up. But yeah. Um, in our ordinance though, um, interest is one percent per month or any portion of the month. Fail to file penalty is ten percent and fail to pay penalty is fifteen percent. So just right there, the combination of all penalties with the tax um, is applicable for the interest to be charged on that combined amount. Just so that you have that information as well.
Was he extended uh, an invitation to come and present his letter in some? If he showed interest soon then?
Uh, no, he had updated his address again when he was here and uh, the last letter I sent him certified has come back undetectable. Um, I don't say I did receive response, so I've been sending everything certified mail to the address that he updated. To uh, the hotel and to his email address, which he updated that one as well. Um, and I do want to say that when I sent him the very final one and I C C R attorney is when we got response. So his total tax payment for. Quarter three twenty twenty through quarter one of twenty-three is fourteen thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars and fourteen cents.
And he and he paid that?
Yes, he paid.
So out of twenty thousand miller, he's paid fourteen thousand.
Yes.
Still O six.
Yes.
So he basically paid seventy-five for seven of them.
And he was properly notified. And from what I gather here, not to assume anything that he he knew appropriately and chose not to.
Yeah, one of the methods that I used was to actually go down there when I spoke to his um, manager. She said, he's coming weekly and I personally have him all the mail. I know he's moved up to the city, so I know he's gotten it. Um, but I have a copy of the email I sent my attorney with all of the dates. I just want me to read all the dates with um. The multiple ways I've tried to contact him.
So how much uh? How much of this, the room tax to the F A?
So the fourteen thousand six hundred is just the room tax portion.
Oh, that's the room tax. So he's just not shoot, he's just asking forgiveness for penalty fees. Okay, I okay, I understand that.
It's my feeling is is it it's not like it was just a few months. This is what, two and a half years? Three, three years, three and a half years roughly, if we go to today, I mean.
And when he, oh, go ahead. I was just gonna say, it does feel like a substantial amount of money, a million percent on a room, but let's say they run for a hundred fifty dollars. That's a lot of rooms they sold for two thousand.
Hmm, when he did reach out, when he finally did respond, um, what was his response?
Um, he said they had um. Family members that had gotten very ill with COVID. Um, they had some uh, deaths in the family. He got married. He had children, his wife, too, in India. Um, and he'd been out of town. He'd been living in Arizona for a while. And um, that his bookkeeper is the one who dealt with all financial matters and his bookkeeper um, had kind of. Put everything that wasn't already on auto pay, um, just on the back burner and didn't tend to. Um, and he said that he personally was going to tend to this matter, get things straightened up. Uh, that his wife would be running the business as well, the bookkeeper would be running, um, the business, because he's been taking care of. Um, and he said he uh, was gonna do it immediately. Um, then. Then after that, he uh, I gave it all of it work right down there. Um, then he emailed me a draft of one. He wanted me to just verify that he filled it out correctly. Um, that same day I responded to him and uh, there's one one correction he needed to make. Um, and other than that, I said, everything else was good. Go ahead and complete the other ones and send them in. Um, he said he would do that immediately. Then a week later, he sent me an email saying that due to bad weather in Portland and the Florida. She was unable to drive here, so he would be mailing everything and sending me their tracking number. Um, a month later, after not hearing from him is when I mailed him, which was on March twenty-fourth. I mailed him the final notice letter. I mailed him all the forms again, and um, I also emailed him a copy of the final notice letter. And I also, when I emailed our attorney and I C C R attorney on the letters and the emails. And saying that he that was, I was giving this to Patel until April seventh. Um, so again, this I sent this March twenty-fourth, I gave him until April seventh. So please get everything in. Um, and I told our attorney, if I hear nothing by then, and that was Friday. So I'll contact you on the following Monday, which is April tenth, to see what our next legal proceeding will be. And April tenth is when the payments came in.
Fifteen thousand.
Yes.
Just the minimum.
And the letter came together with the.
So only, but he knew about the penalties?
Yes, when I spoke to him in person, he knew about the penalties and at that meeting, he has said, well, I'm gonna request to waive the penalties and. Um, so to have my penalties waived. Um, so he had been planning on that as well.
So according to your timeline. March twenty-third is when he said he would get those to you and then there was some kind of a, or no, March nineteenth. Or there about seventeen, he said he would get those to you and seven days later, there was just really bad conditions. And a month later, you still haven't heard from them.
Right, he came tomorrow, this February thirteenth. Um, he emailed me. On February twentieth with the draft. And then he emailed me on the twenty-eighth saying that due to bad weather. Um, he couldn't make it. He was gonna mail everything and send me tracking numbers and then March twenty-fourth. Um, so here's over a month after we met in person that I sent him that final notice and contacted our attorney.
Yeah, I I don't want to wait this week.
I I really appreciate all the diligence and the thoroughness.
I did have one more question.
Following your own app and the patience on our both timelines.
Wanted to jump in. It sounded like you guys are ready to wrap up. I have one more question. When is the next payment or how often um, would would the payments have to happen?
The payments are due uh, quarterly, so before the end of the quarter, I send out the transit room tax forms to them. Um, so that they have an entire month uh, with those forms physically in their possession to get the payment back to us. So it's due at the end of the following month after quarter end.
And we're looking for a motion or a vote on our consensus?
Uh, we're still asking a question. Do you guys have any questions for Marta? Concerning this. I had one question. Go ahead.
I I was just gonna say, so and and just so I'm clear, when uh, if we decide to not waive this penalty, when is the payment due?
Um, according to our ordinance, you would have to have payments submitted within twenty days.
Okay, and then what is the recourse if he decides not to pay it?
Um, then it's just like any other unpaid delinquent account, we have the.
Send it to collections or?
Yes.
Got you. Okay. And does interest accrue on that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out, does the fellow need a little more time to pay? Would we work to extend his payment? To be able to say, okay, whatever that timeline might be, give us two months. You owe this amount. We're not gonna add penalties on it, but if you don't pay it on this day. Then these are gonna be your penalties accruing. This is what you're gonna have. I just kind of thinking, is there another way?
Like it's. Like Marta has put in a decent amount of time and and laid word on being patient and understanding. And I feel like it would be disrespecting her time if there wasn't a hard line at some point drawn.
I also think that the ordinance can spell that out as well. You didn't hear that either.
I get that, but I'm just also thinking, we've all been in hard times, whether it's legit or not. But does, is, should grace be, should there be a little bit of grace and or not? That's all I'm talking about. I have some discussion, I think then.
Yeah, and one of the reasons that I asked the question of what was his response when he finally did respond was um, I wanted to know if he had asked for something like that. Um, as far as a little extra time or something, but it doesn't sound like that was the case. Um, and it sounded like much later is when he just said, oh, I'm gonna ask that these to be waived. It doesn't sound like he at any point requested an extension or be able to meet with us to maybe discuss being able to work something out. Um, so um.
I think he was just hoping it'd go away.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I guess the other thing that you should consider is that he collected money. He used our money that he should have turned in. To us, he used that for a year or two. That's why the penalty is in place because normally we don't have people that are delinquent. Because, you know, the, they know that this money they collect from the traveler that pays that. And that it's not their money. It's not to be used for expenses in their business. They are strictly a pass through. So. I think we need to consider that, that.
So my next question again is, are we looking for a vote or a motion on how we feel about this? You want to proceed?
Yes, it's gonna be determined by you how you wish to proceed. Um, he's asking for waiver of penalties and interest. Um, and his appeal rights in um, origin six dash. Two thousand and three. And um, you can do further investigations. Uh, you can decide, okay. Um, is ultimately where you wanna go with it tonight.
Well, I think investigation's been done. I mean, you did a really good job on detailing everything. Think really it's a matter of just voting and whether or not we move forward with. Not, I mean, I guess I would make a motion that uh, we do not waive. The late penalties or the the interest fee that he pays his debt in full.
Same.
So I have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion you'd like to have over this? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right.
You have the direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, city manager recruitment. I bet everybody's just dying to know about that. However. I have a little statement. All right. So what I'm going to need, or is there anything you wanted to add before?
So I I would just uh, uh, maybe mayor could take a minute to go over to the general public the process uh, uh, all the way through to your reading today. Just given an overview of what has transpired uh, in the recruitment of a new city manager.
All right, so our city, our city management went through the process to. Try to find some individuals to become our new city manager. We had two candidates. We did an interview process with those candidates. And then that evening, we did a meet and greet and. We were able to get comment cards. We were able to get feedback from the panel committee or the interview panels. And we got a lot of valuable information. Tonight at uh, in our executive session, we reviewed our comment cards. And so that is kind of where we're at now, so. Is there anything else you wanted to know out of that?
I think that kind of that's it.
So what we're going to do is I'm going to need a motion either to authorize. Or not authorize the city manager to offer a conditional offer. Did I do that right? Or did, do we?
Authorize the city manager to negotiate a conditional offer on this council's behalf to candidate one.
Candidate one, I should have read what I did. All right, so I'm gonna say this better. Okay, I need a motion to authorize the city manager authority to offer a conditional offer to candidate number one. So I need somebody to make that motion.
I can make a motion. Do you want to? I'll let you carry it.
So you make the motion to to authorize the city manager?
Yes.
To candidate number one. Which would be a conditional offer and you seconded it?
Same.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so uh. City Manager Stoco, you will be doing that?
Okay, start first thing in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Who's report?
Uh so you should have uh our stats. For April in your package, um if you can see, there there are three switches added. As each month of the year goes by, I guess, I don't have anything concrete, but you know, the weather type for four people are out. Um and so things are just a little busier. Um. Any questions specifically on the report? And the only other thing I wanted to touch on, I know um at the last city council meeting, you just had the uh often involved shooting. Uh to beginning of April. Just an update on that, um it is still under investigation by OSP, so we're waiting for them to complete the investigation. Um to go to the district attorney, um so the officer is still off on administratively pending. That, so that's kind of the only update I got on that, uh I don't have anything else unless um. The council and mayor have a question.
Any question?
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Please mark our building department report.
So, in your pocket, you should have the report uh for April um from the building department, that you're anything you'd like to talk about on?
No, just we're, I know on lots of plan reviews, have a lot of comments to start.
Understand, I'm just.
City manager report. Oh, did I, I thought you just gave that, sorry. Public Works Department.
Well, uh the public works director is here, so I don't know, I can put him on the spot, but uh. April twenty twenty-three uh report uh. Uh again, uh they've been extremely busy, um we're still working on trying to get our uh. Um radio reads done, which hopefully will alleviate a lot of manpower use. Once we get those readers done and up, but that's been a slow process and. A lot of it's supply and demand, and unfortunately, there's a lot of demand, but very little supply, so, uh but we're still working on. Uh public versus state isn't.
Do you have anything you'd like to share? I love it. Straight. Uh, city manager report.
Okay, uh. Uh I'll just kind of highlight some of the things in the in the uh. So uh we opened up our bids for phase two of the water system, uh that project's moving along. Um, this will be our uh electric three pump station, the booster pump station and million gallon reservoir. Uh we'd be down by the uh public works shop that it is now. Um. The load bid was ten million, will eventually change, and uh. Um, it is a little lower than what we were expecting, so that's a good sign, but. My guess is by the time they get the project done, it's probably gonna be over that, so. Um. Aaron and I met with Elaine Howard, um. Some of you may know her, but she's the, the. Uh lady that we worked with to form uh urban renewal districts in the city of Borden in the past. Uh we want to uh explore the options of doing a north urban renewal. Um. Which would help pay back some of that infrastructure, uh ex, you know expenditures that we have coming forward, so. Um, we'll be providing a map here shortly, we just met with our engineer in the last couple of days and he provided a map. So hopefully we'll get that to you and give you an idea of what that would look like. And then, of course, we have to sell the urban renewal, why is such a great idea for our community, but. Um there's a lot of areas in that area that are light that could definitely use some time, so. Uh, next one's a little tougher, um. So uh. Our public works director of a- almost twenty-seven years uh has uh. Advice that he's ready to retire. I guess I don't blame him, uh he wants to spend more time with his family and and we're excited for him, so. Um. Uh I I I think if you wouldn't mind, um. If we maybe give him a round of applause for his commitment to the program. Fortunately, uh he's been willing to uh uh come back and and contract back because we are working under his licenses. For uh our wastewater water uh treatment program, so uh he'll come back for a short period. Um we have put out uh uh, I've had staff put out uh a notice that he's retiring and accept letters of interest from within. Uh if we can find a good candidate from within, we'll go down that road. If that doesn't work, then we'll need to open it up to the general public and see if we can find somebody more to take on this time. I'm pretty excited that we have staff that uh could potentially take that on, so.
Congratulations, I'm pretty jealous, but congratulations. I see, uh maybe there's gonna be a party coming up, maybe, a little more than a clap.
Well, he 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 thinks he's gonna be done in June, but it's probably gonna be January. I don't know that he thinks it's gonna be that long.
To follow his predecessor?
Um, he's been a great addition to our team, so uh along with that. Um our school resource officer has also uh uh advised that he's going to retire. Um. His retirement date that he gave me is a little different than what he's proposing now. Uh he was hired as our new park district manager, um I'm I'm still holding into the the original date, but he's not cooperating, so. Uh, she's gonna have a hard time finding a a replacement and the part of. Uh George's um. Obligation, I guess you would say, that if he wants to retire before January twenty-four, then he probably needs to find a replacement, so. I put the recruiting on him.
Congratulations.
Yes. Uh. Uh Tony advised me that uh we gave out a hundred and thirty-two garbage vouchers for the month of April on our uh. Quickback program. Um, there's a lot of other stuff in the report, um I I I do wanna say. Uh. That um. There was an unfortunate and tragic uh uh loss of a police officer in Nissa. Um in the line of duty, a volunteer police officer who didn't get paid to do the job. Out. Taking care of his community. Um, and receiving no wage. Two kids, no wife. Um, it was a tough, tough day, um some of us are. And have served in Nissa, uh I didn't personally know the officer that was involved, but I know a lot of the staff that. Uh worked for me while I was the chief there are really, really suffering. Uh. He was, he was a good man. Um, several of us went over to the to the funeral, uh I I can tell you that. That's a, that's a supervisor's worst nightmare. That's the thing that keeps me up at night, making sure my staff is home, safe. And so, um I'm sorry to say that uh. It's just a horrible tragic event that should have never happened. Um I would ask if if the council would so. Uh. Do so, if they would uh do a moment of silence in honor of. Officer Johnson and his tragic loss.
And which time would you like?
Just a moment of silence, a minute.
Okay, so at this time, we'll do a moment of silence for one minute for Officer. Johnson. All right, thank you.
So uh last thing I would say on that is uh. Uh please keep all of our officers in your thoughts and prayers, make sure they get home each night safe. Um, there was uh probably over a thousand people to the end of the funeral. Um, and there were police officers from all of the Pacific Northwest there. Um we had probably three to five hundred patrol cars or emergency vehicles in a procession. Um uh two hundred and fifty reach from Idaho, um so it was the. When 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 we honor our fallen brothers and sisters, it's quite an event and uh. He was definitely paid tribute, so thank you, that's all I can. Actually, not all I have, um I gave you each uh a non-disclosure agreement that I would like you to let go out. It's one of them that's for uh. Uh Amazon and others for just general student business, uh we like to keep those uh hidden file, make sure. Uh because there are a lot of things that we just simply cannot discuss outside of uh doing business for the city of Borden, so if you can address that. One other thing, uh we've had some some discussions and 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 this is not an action item, but it's something to make me start thinking about. Uh we have several areas throughout the city of Borden that uh. Either have a partial sidewalk or uh no sidewalk uh on their properties. Um. A landowner is responsible to have a sidewalk on their property. Um I'm proposing that uh we have some funding uh through our American Rescue Plan Act. That we might be able to maybe look at. A project um throughout the city. Um that maybe we consider paying, uh splitting the cost, sixty forty split. With the property owner to try to get those sidewalks completed. Um. Uh just something to start thinking about, I think it's a good project, um it's it's a safety project, especially where. You could be walking in the middle of the the night on a sidewalk and take the next step and there is no sidewalk. Um, there's there's yards that I completed with sidewalk, so something we might be able to do. Um initially, or I initially thought about maybe just doing a section at a time in town, you know, just to kind of pick it out. The problem is, uh Marta pointed out that by the time we mold. Uh a company to come in and and do that every time, the cost of doing business is gonna go up, so if we can get a. A a bunch of them done at at once, it seems to make a good sign. And then I think that we talk to this program for however many months and how however long the funds last. And then once that's done, it's done, um and then. We may have to see where we are, but there might be enough funds to address a lot of the side equity.
Well, if it's successful, we could uh maybe try to find funds to. Fund it differently.
Right. It's just something to think about, it's just a a a proposal, uh there's a lot of things probably need to be worked at and we probably need to have a work session to get a little more detail. But it is something we would like to to start talking about, I think it's a project we can do in the near future. And uh we only have so much time in which uh, well, I think we have until twenty-five to spend those funds, so. Oh, yes, so um we had uh Mike Lee's with Anderson Perry uh come up and do a street inventory. Uh basically, what they did is they brought their 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 street engineer to come and look at all the streets in Borden. And then grade them as to, this one can be fixed with a chip seal, this one's gonna have to be totally completely uh tore out, new base put in and so on and so forth. We're hoping to have that uh in the next uh couple of months. Um, I I would strongly recommend that we look at our roads, our infrastructure, our roads are are starting to deteriorate, some of them worse than others. If we can save them by doing a chip seal or a top coat or whatever it takes to do those, we probably ought to do that. Uh at some point, we're gonna have to get those what streets fixed, and at some point, it'll cost you more to repair them and then you can do some amendments on them early on.
I have a question. A few months ago, we got the report on the streets, um I forget the name of the guy who did the. Traffic study. And it seems that we had requested that that traffic study also include. It's not chaparral, it's Mount.
The intersection.
Yes, the intersection of Thaler and is it Mount Hood?
Yes.
Um, and but I didn't see that in the traffic study.
Um, he was asked about it, that is something he's still working on.
Okay.
The the main street uh uh project was a big project and that was our priority at the time, um especially with. The intersection of Borden Avenue. And uh we are working on that project as well.
Well, I saw you know that we were talking to the Mon developer about the chaparral development. So that streets only gonna get busier and that we're.
It it potentially could, but we're trying to find ways to develop that and add more streets to that. Intersections, so they're not all on that one street.
Okay. For the sidewalks, are you able to um? Address also, there are some areas where the, we talked about the standing water. Um, that they are built in a way where maybe they don't get as damaged. Just if there is certain areas where maybe we talked about in a previous meeting that there was standing water in certain areas when it rains a lot.
So I think that's gonna do a lot with our drainage system and 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 probably I would refer to Kevin to. Uh some of those areas with with our French drain system, that's correct, it's a French drain that. When you have that large amount of water, it's just gonna take time to drain, so.
Okay.
Um. I'm not saying that we wouldn't look at them, but those are one of the, that's part of our problem is it's a French drain system.
Okay.
And they get sewn off with oil and.
Road debris and leaves, you know, whatever gets. Swept into them.
Yeah.
By by or shoveled into them, you know. Um. The other thing too, that that uh you might think about on the sidewalk project is um. If for some reason, uh a property owner can't afford to. Uh uh pay their portion all at once, maybe we look at a a project of. Uh maybe adding to their, a a payment to their utility bill until it's completed. Um, that's a little more work for Marta, but uh you know, that might be an option because. It's not, it's not a cheap project, and if they if they didn't budget for it, you know, that might take some time, but. We wanna look at ways to better improve pedestrians uh paths and and safety enforcement.
Well, this might get us down in the weeds, but um. If West Extension Irrigation District is going to redo the irrigation ditch along Paul Smith. And the county and the city share that street. Is there a way to work collaboratively with those two agencies? To build a sidewalk over the West Extension Irrigation Districts?
So what I, what I would tell you, the staff have met with the uh the county and the irrigation district and having discussions about that project. Um there's gonna be some easement issues. Um and um uh I don't think uh Mike. Understanding when talking to Bev that she really wanted to put anything over the top of their irrigation pipe. So there's not a lot of room there.
I know. It's a very, very narrow road.
Well, and and some of those properties are probably encroaching. And those will have to be discussed, there have been conversations uh open last year on how to do it, and we've made several. Um, suggestions, but. Really, it's up to the county for the most part and uh West Extension. Uh we wanna be a willing partner, but. If if that happens, then that's when really what 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 my opinion is, is all that should be under the road. And then you have more option for. Uh putting a sidewalk in, but um the pipe that the irrigation district wants to use won't support that because of the weight. Um that we suggested using a different type of pipe, but that is not something that they seem interested in. Um. Last thing I would mention, I had uh uh somebody with the FFA approach me today. Um just along with the discussion about chickens and stuff about the property that we. Um, just along with the discussion about chickens and stuff about the property that we initially discussed with them, um probably a year, year and a half ago, um, if we're still willing to, the city's still willing to work with them to uh try to get that project out so that they can do farming and chickens and rabbits and all that stuff out there on the city property out there.
Well, I don't think they came with a very big proposal. I mean, there was still a discussion about whether who was in charge and who could be out there and couldn't be out there.
That was, that was my discussion with them is, is FFA and, and four H need to figure out how to work together to make this happen, to make it a viable project for everybody, not just one organization. That was kind of the direction that the council had in the past, and, and that's kind of what I passed on. Um, I still would like to see the project move forward if they can figure out how to make it happen because that, that, that's a good use of that property and uh uh it'll alleviate some of the issues with having livestock and, and, and stuff in.
It's gotta be for both. It's gotta be. Now, that's just me speaking. I'm not speaking for anybody else, but it's gotta be for both. Especially with the, the problems that are coming with uh four H on the north end and south end that are just that's OSU problems, but um we cannot allow four H to go away. It needs, they have, if, if they want that property, they have to work together. They can't just go to one organization. I don't care who does the work. Not gonna, and then, yeah, that's just me, that's just the mayor talking.
Unless the council has any further questions, that's all I have.
I did wanna throw out one other thing. I know you've mentioned funds, so um I just wanna throw, I don't know the limitations um on what you can use it for, but you did say it had to be used by a certain amount of time. But um, one of the, one of the things that came up in a previous meeting was with um the mailboxes and looking at um what arrogant did with replacing all the individual boxes. Um, even if we didn't do that for everybody in Borman, but if we looked at some of the um more populated areas, um, which I think would benefit um the postal workers, but um also increases the safety and reduces theft and things like that. Um, just if, if that would also be something where you could work out with residents um sixty thirty split or something um as another way to use funds, just a thought.
Well, I would answer for the Marty if that's gonna fall into the our money. I think that's an infrastructure.
Okay, right. It's not, it's not big enough to be infrastructure.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it has to die there.
No, it, it, no, and, and again, this is why we do our work sessions, so that we can talk about projects and, and, and so that you guys can prioritize what projects are, are high on your list. We, we did our last planning session and a lot of the projects that you guys discussed are coming to fruition now. It doesn't mean they happen overnight, but they are coming to fruition, and uh we hopefully we'll see some of that stuff uh wrapping up in the next few months, so um the uh, the wastewater project, um, that, that was a five-year venture basically to get to where it is and and uh or, or getting there. Um, there was a request put in uh that uh we invite the city council to go on a tour of the port. Um, and the, and the area in Borman, uh, we, we've done that a few times with the city council, just to show some of the stuff that's going on. So we might in the near future try to be scheduling a date that we can make that happen. Um, it's probably not gonna be like on a city council night, because I don't think we could get done in time, but we'll have to schedule another meeting and, and you guys get paid so much for doing this that will uh.
Yeah, that you say that way too often.
I wish you.
We received nothing.
Um, other than that, staff has been really busy. Uh, this process, uh, city management recruitment and uh uh just trying to help out with the uh staff inside the building, just challenge. So, um, we got a good team, should be proud of it, yeah.
Well, can I give you one more update that I forgot to tell you? This was recent, as of yesterday. Um, our prior audit charter has finally finished the audit for fiscal year twenty twenty one. Um, and yes, as of yesterday, so uh so I wanna let you know that that one is finally done. I can check that one off. So you'll get an email um plenty of time before the next meeting so that you can enjoy the ninety-five pages of the audit that I've already read multiple times to correct. Um, uh, and then you will have to, well, you'll have, we'll go there, but if you agree um for, for the Google next meeting, uh, there will be plenty of time for you to read that.
And we have a bunch appearing once a week.
Yeah, May sixteen is our budget committee meeting. It's either on your calendar, seven P M for the Urban Renewal Agency and then seven fifteen for the city of Borden.
Good reminder.
Thanks, Brett.
Counsel comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The only thing I would like to bring up is I did attend the small cities meeting uh with LLC, and they really are interested in if we have any other training that they would like that we would like to have. They really are wanting to move forward on that. So if you can think of things, I know that it seems to me like we hear a lot of, of com- that we compare them a lot to the special districts and the meetings that they hold and the material that they present and the um county commissions, you know, they have to go to county college is what they call it, and they demand, and we don't here in city hall or council, we've never demanded that the counselors take the training that is offered. But if you are a commissioner, you, you don't have a choice. You, you go to, to the town like Salem or wherever they have to go. And you know, it's a day-long thing, like every once a month for several months. So anyway, if you can think of other trainings or things that you'd like to have them do for cities, they're more than uh anxious to.
And who would we give our recommendation to?
I suppose you could give them to city hall and we could pass them on. I suppose you could just email uh Lily, you know.
I was just thinking that probably on this council currently, Karen, you and I are the only ones who've entered formal training on urban renewal. So there could be a lot of people who might benefit from understanding that. I could sure use a refresh course, probably been eight years since I heard about it. Is that something I would cover, or is that something that?
I would look because uh Elaine is going to do a one on urban renewal Thursday evening. You had to, but you needed to sign up for it, and it's a, uh, and, and it was reasonably enough. I mean, the price was, was not prohibitive at all. And but yes, there's, but she will come out. She's gonna be here. She'll come out whenever we get the map done and ready to go. She will come out and we, we will have
Back in the day, we would have like a work session.
Yes.
I'll sit around and get the details, learn about it.
Yes, there's gonna be when he, when he mentioned that how you are so happy to work for free, uh I, I don't know, he know, knew that I was scheduling you also. But anyway, no, urban renewal will, there'll be, but for longer. Because we would really like to get it buttoned up in November. So we're back on that fast track. You're gonna do something, you just will work hard at it and get it done. But so and she's just waiting to hear from us. So that's all I have.
Any other counselors have some comments? All right, I have some comments. So I'd really like to thank the high school students for coming. Uh, this is super cool and I just wanna thank you for coming. Uh, the presenters. I, I appreciate the presenters that come and take their time to come out and speak to the council. If we could only get more people to do that, to get their ideas, because you are the ones that make the change. There's a process, but you are the ones. You have to, that's how you get things done. You have to be involved. You have to, to, to get the community involved. Couple people, probably not, and it's very difficult, and I say it doesn't happen, but it's very difficult, but uh, make sure that uh you get people involved. What's super cool is the, the dream that is coming to an end on the sidewalk. I remember when the V C D A, that all started out as a probably, I do believe it was one of them, not gonna taste stupid things on the internet, right? But it was a survey. And you know, and then it comes to a reality uh during the time that we are serving here, and it's continuously being built and take a look at that. That's just super cool uh to be able to see when it's an idea and it's coming to an end. And the third thing that I'd like to say is if you get a chance to go out and take a look at what's going on in the port, drive out there, go on Internet Parkway, go out there and see. Well, don't drive where you're not supposed to. I'm not saying that, but go out there and drive and see what's going on out there. Be informed of what that business over there is doing for you and for this area, because I guarantee if you go out there and drive around, you would go, oh, I wonder what that's for? I wonder why that's built there. Hmm, I wonder why those four big ponds are there. What's the purpose of that? I saw that for the first time on Thursday. I saw these buildings going up there. We went out there. It was kind of interesting why that's there, but no one's out there. And I guess without be informed, that's probably what I would say. Try to be informed. And uh that is all I have to say, and I'm gonna adjourn this meeting.
Just a minute. I want to say.
Your time was up.
It's not up because I want the, I want the students out there.
Okay, you, we're back to counselor comments.
I want you to look in like how many Riverside graduates are sitting up here? So this should, yes, because if you go Jackie and Lauren and Richard and Christina and.
I graduated from high school, but not come here.
Well, and Heather and this is, I'm crying. And, and so those.
As a Highlander.
Those, those are all Riverside graduates. Then you have two teachers sitting up here, so we, this is really a great representation of
You teach to.
Of your community and the, the process. So you've been, here's a goal. You want to all become interested in donating a lot of time to the city. So anyway, I just think it's so cool that we have so many people in our area and staff that are willing to work hard for the city of Borden. Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
I agree, Karen.
Or I, I shouldn't take Karen. This is better. Uh, anything else? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you again.